Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Board of Health to order. Today is Thursday, November 1st, 2018. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. We're also on cable access television on the government channel where, if you get cable, and we're streaming on the Internet. Can we have a roll call, Kathy, please, for the record?
Supervisor Avon.
Yes.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Yes.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Yes.
Supervisor Barrett.
Yes.
Mayor Kroll.
Yes.
Kroll is President.
Thank you. Could we call on our good friend Ken Haskins of the First Christian Church to get us started? Ken, it's good to see you again. Rockin' Rev. Get us going today, man. Fire us up.
Oh, boy.
We recognize our need for you. That it has been said and written that the foolishness of God is wiser than the wisdom of men. And so we know, Lord, that we need you. And I just pray for our mayor and for the supervisors here that you would grant them a degree of wisdom that's necessary to make good decisions on behalf of all who live in this wonderful community, Carson City, that we call home. And I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Now, we'll go to item number five, public comment. This is a time for the public to comment on and discuss any topic that's relevant to or within the authority of this body. Any public comment? We do. And by the way, while Darren's coming up to the table there, we will have public comment where appropriate throughout today on agenda items. We also have public comment at the end. All right. Public comment. Mr. Schultz.
Good morning. Darren Schultz, Public Works Director. Good morning, Mayor, Board of Supervisors. I'm very excited today to introduce two new staff members to our Public Works team. At my immediate right here, we have Andy Hummel, and next to him, we have Eddie Qualieri. And I'll open the mics for them to tell you a little bit about them.
Yes.
Welcome to the first. Welcome to the bridegroom.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor. Fellow supervisors, again, my name's Andy Hummel, your new wastewater utility manager. Come from City of Sparks, where I was there for 14 years, doing very similar work. But Darren attracted me away, thankfully. So he's got a great team here and look forward to contributing.
And we gave you a brand-new plant to boot.
Yes, exactly. There's some exciting things going on down here.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, good morning, everybody. My name's Eddie Qualieri, the new water utility manager. Really happy to be here. Come from a broad background of water industry work, land development, regulation at the Public Utilities Commission. And recently, I was at Division Water Resources in the water rights world. And I'm really happy to be here and happy to work on the water system. Thanks for having me. Oh, I also wanted to clear the record. The last time I was here, I was called a lawyer. I have been called worse, but not by much, so. Wanted to just clear that. Clear that for the record.
Where's Ken Haskins, man? I need help. Well, now that you go down that road, let me just tell you, you know, I get all kinds of grief from that Bradley Building down the road there from Conservation of the National Resources and the state engineer about stealing you. So, you know, you might as well be a lawyer. And it's good that you're all dressed up in suits. That's good, guys. That's good. Anything else? We're happy to have you here. Thanks. Any other public comment this morning? Anybody? I don't see any. Oh, come on up. Come on up.
For the record, Rex Jennings. Good morning, Mayor, Board. Nevada Day Parade was a great day, wasn't it?
It was a good day.
Okay. Well, apparently, at the beard competition, Carson City won the most bearded community. They asked for somebody from Carson City, official Carson City person, to come up and accept the award. And there was nobody there except my little brother, Todd. So he claimed to be the mayor pro tem and accepted the award on behalf of Carson City and then has asked me to come here to give it to you. So I have a plaque to give to you.
Okay. Wonderful. All right.
I'm going to throw him under the bus. He threw me under the bus.
That's good. All right. Rex put the... Let's see. End that up here. Let's pass that around a little bit.
That's great. Thank you, Rex.
All right. Most bearded... Boy.
Our most coveted award.
Yeah.
You know, a little...
I resemble this statement.
A little story on the beards. One of the times when I was first mayor, there was a beard contest and we beat Virginia City. And so the local newspaper, it wasn't Ann back there, but came up and asked me, what do you think is, you know, how come Carson City beats Story County? And I happened to give the flippant remark, "We have a lot younger beards down here than you guys do up there." That caused a whole lot of trouble, man. I go, "You got what?" Younger beards. We're not so old up here. Well, anyway, it's a good place. All right. Anybody else? Thanks, Rex. And thanks to Todd, too, for taking over there. That's good. All right. All right. Anybody else? Public comment? I don't see any. So are we ready to move to possible adoption agenda? Any changes to the agenda? City Manager?
No changes.
Board members, were you on anything? All right. Then unless there's hearing, no objection, we'll adopt the agenda as published. And I will move from the dais down to the floor for special presentations. I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Commander Robert Bloodsaw.
I think the mic's working.
Come over here, Val. Robert, come over here. Brings tears to my eyes. Ah, yeah. Pretty nice. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow board members and our audience here in our community, if you've been to any of the Memorial Day ceremonies out there, we have out at the cemetery on each Memorial Day, that's put on by this gentleman right here in uniform. He's done that now for 17 years. And little-known, you know, also, maybe it is more widely known than you'd expect, he's also been the commander of the Naval Sea Cadets Program. And sometimes, you know, we look at the Naval Sea Cadets Program and think, okay, it's just young kids, you know, out doing their thing. But the Naval Sea Cadets Program is a tremendous program for the education of our youth about what the Navy's all about. And it provides leadership skills, and it's a great way for kids to learn how to make the right choices in life. And Robert, Commander, you've done a wonderful job for these years in taking care of the Sea Cadets. And he's in that... He's actually on duty today. But on behalf of all of us here in Carson City, we would like to offer you the certificate of appreciation to Lieutenant Commander Robert Bloodsaw in appreciation for your service as Naval Sea Cadet Commander, which has resulted in numerous young men and women learning leadership skills that stay with them through life. For 17 years, you've organized and conducted Carson City's Memorial Day Ceremony, as well as donated countless hours of your time to play the bagpipes. Where are they today?
Home resting, sir.
Home resting. For all different types of ceremonies. The community of Carson City would like to thank you for all that you've done to enrich the lives of others and making Carson City a better place to live, work, and play. Signed, Mayor, on behalf of all of us here. So, Robert, thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thanks for all you've done all these past years for us.
Thank you, sir.
And it really is something special to have be the Navy, too. So here, come on. Want to say a few words? Come on.
Sir, ladies and gentlemen, this is a great honor, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It was something that I was volunteered for 17 years ago. And after that ceremony, I was voluntold that I was now doing it. After 17 years, I decided I'm getting old and slow and want to turn it over to some new blood. So the commanding officer of the Carson City Division, Lieutenant John Hanna, will be organizing and running future Memorial Day ceremonies. Again, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the community, not only in this, but commanding the U.S. Navy Sea Cadet Corps and piping for the Carson City Sheriff's Office Honor Guard. I must have did okay because no one caught... I didn't catch any tomatoes as I was doing the parade. So on behalf of the mayor, God bless the U.S. Navy and our United States of America, and you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Come on up here. So in the Navy, we say what?
Bravo Zulu.
Bravo Zulu. What's that mean, huh? Everybody's saying, "Come on, Kroll. What's that mean?" Well done in Navy speak. Okay, come on up here. Let's get a picture. Come on. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Let's stay here.
Such a pleasure, sir.
All right. Let's do it now. We'll stay down here. Thanks, Robert.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Supervisors.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I can talk loud, though.
Oh, that's all right. Are you Navy?
Army. As a matter of fact, retired Army.
Well, I retired Navy, as a matter of fact.
Okay. The reason why I'm here this morning is that Carson City... Well, first of all, let me introduce myself. I'm Don Palowski. I'm the President of the American Public Works Association for Nevada Chapter. And it's been my pleasure over this last year to preside over the 600 members that we have in the state. Several hundred from Carson City. Not really, but we have several from Carson City. And I want to tell you that Carson City's been a great supporter of the American Public Works Association. There are over 30,000 members worldwide, or at least Canada and the United States. And we have a program that we do every year. We do a training conference in northern Nevada. Typically, we have over 250 attendees. We seek nominations for projects of the year. And one of those categories is the 20 million, over $20 million environmental project. You happen to have the winner of this year's project. That particular project has many of those people sitting in the back row over there that work for the water treatment facility. The winner was the upgrades and the improvements that were made to the water treatment facility this year. You had an excellent project management team. Lopez, Ms. Lopez is sitting there, and of course Darren from the Public Works.
And now Andy, who's going to take over.
And Andy, you've got a great facility to go to. Yes, that's right. One of the things is, these projects cannot be done without the support, obviously, of our elected officials. And we appreciate that very much. And of course, the hard-working people from the public works agencies. To coincide with that, we had a great team of project delivery that included Corolla Engineering, excellent company, and then the construction folks from KG Walters and Q &amp; D Construction did an outstanding job. They did so well, they were able to finish the project nine months early and under budget. And they've given you additional items on that budget, as a matter of fact. So for that, the American Public Works Association would like to present to Carson City our Project of the Year Award for the environmental projects over $20 million. And thank you, sir, for a great job.
Wow. All right. Well, let's come up here. All right. Let me put this... Put that down. Let's go back and show all of these folks. They're the... Let's go in here.
Come on, Dick. Project management team ought to come up here.
As we get a picture... Rachel, just a second. Rachel, as we get a picture, I hope you can all hear me here. You know, we are terribly proud of what Carson City's done. You know, the wastewater treatment plant, you know, after many, many years, it's threatening to fail and things of that nature, all that. But to be awarded from the American Public Works Association, this award is a special thing for our community. Not only did, as you mentioned, not only did it come in under budget, but nine months early. And that will put our community in good stead for many years, past when I'm not even no longer here. And this community can look forward to a good, healthy, environmental environment out there at our wastewater treatment plant. So on behalf of all of us, want to thank you from the American Public Works Association. And I want to thank our staff and the Public Works Department and everybody who's had a hand in making that project come to fruition. It's one of the biggest projects that Carson City's undertaken. It's undertaken professionally and well-done. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we get a picture.
All right, Andy.
Yes.
We'll be stuck at the end.
Welcome aboard.
Pretty nice. So all the way from best beards or beards in Carson City to national award. Very good. All right. Covering all the bases. Any other special presentations? I don't see any. Let's now take up the consent agenda. Any member of the public want something pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Seeing none, board members, are we okay with that? Or you want something pulled? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of two items from the assessor, one item from finance, and two items from purchasing and contracts.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now let's take up item 12. This is a presentation only to talk about the... To get an update and the accomplishments of one of the premier organizations here in Carson City. Cassie, how's that? All right. Lisa.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for, once again, having or allowing us to do a little bit of bragging on behalf of the nonprofit Carson Animal Services Initiative. And so what I've done is I've prepared just a super, super short PowerPoint that I'm going to speak to, just highlighting some of the awesome things that our incredible team has done. And so at this first slide, as you can see, truly, we started to help build a new shelter. And in the process, we have found this community to be so incredibly caring, supportive, and we cannot thank the community of Carson City enough and all the support we've received from everyone. And so the biggie this year, one of several, but June 1st, we donated a new custom-built animal control vehicle to the city of Carson City to be used by Nevada Humane Society in Carson City. And as you can see, this vehicle, it's a four-wheel drive. It has five kennels that are air-conditioned in the summer and heated in the winter because really it's about compassion and humane treatment of animals. Animals who are picked up out in the field, whether they're stray or lost or at large, you know, they're already frightened. And so this is an opportunity to safely transport to the shelter or to return back to their homes. And that happens quite a bit as well, which is wonderful because if we can keep animals out of the shelter, that helps everyone and definitely keeps community members happy. A special thank you on this one to Chuck Crittenen. He really spearheaded this whole process. Chuck's over there in the audience, and so he did a beautiful job, really doing the groundwork for this. And so we had a wonderful...
He's hiding out back there. He's hiding out.
I know. I know. Well, I was... He was told to... No.
Did you hear that, Chuck?
But we had a wonderful celebration, and I thank all the community members who came out to... For the dedication, if you will, to the city and Humane Society. We also, last year, put in a play yard at the new shelter. It's on the west side of the building. And it's been wonderful because it's difficult for animals to be in a shelter. It doesn't matter how beautiful the building is, it's still scary for our critters. And so this play yard really helps animals kind of get their wiggles out, run around, get tired, regroup, just be dogs, and therefore they're more adoptable. And so this was a $30,000 project. The vehicle was close to $70,000. All of this donated to the city to help our animals and our community because people, whether they're supportive of animals or... I shouldn't say supportive, but whether animals are their passion or if it's just one more thing in life, I think we can all agree that we don't want to see animals suffer, and we do want to see a safe community. And shelters provide that resource to help alleviate those problems. And here's another picture of the shelter or of the play yard. We also fenced an area behind the shelter that allows for assessments and so behavior This year, and actually, this is... We teamed with Pets of the Homeless and Fish, and we helped with their wellness clinic. This was in May. And so Cassie provided free spay and neuter vouchers for 42 applicants. These are animals that would not be able to be spayed or neutered because of financial concerns. And so therefore, it allowed Pets of the Homeless and Fish, it allowed their money to go further in helping meet the needs of this part of the community. And we're really proud of that, and we're going to start teaming with Pets of the Homeless every year. And you can see quite a long line of folks. We also have teamed with Shakespeare Animal Fund. This is out of Reno. They provide emergency medical assistance in an emergency situation for animals. So if a pet is hit by a car, or if suddenly they're super ill and the owners don't have the means to get them to that initial vet appointment, Cassie has given $10,000 to this organization with the understanding that Carson City calls that we... That money will be earmarked for the animals of Carson City residents. The beauty of that is, we're really helping our animals in this community because it's all about reducing suffering. But we're also helping their money go further because animals don't know what county they live in. And it's not about stopping the compassion at the county line. It's about really helping as many animals and their families as we possibly can. So we're really thrilled about that. And actually, the number is higher than 60 now. And then we kicked off the Critter Fixer in May of 2017. And this is a low-cost spay-neuter voucher program for qualifying applicants. And so cats to spay or neuter, it's 25. Dogs are 50. And one does need to qualify because there's also, I'm thrilled to say, the low-cost spay-neuter through Nevada Humane Society and the wonderful medical clinic. So this is not in lieu of that. This is for those folks who still wouldn't be able to afford the reduced prices. And so our Critter Fixer, we have, to date, issued 205 vouchers, which that's amazing because you think about, those are litters that haven't or won't be born, and those are animals that won't end up going into the shelter. And the thing is that when people's pets have pups or kittens, it's fine and good that they find homes, but then those puppies and kittens frequently aren't spayed or neutered. And so then they continue to have pets that there aren't enough homes for. And our partners in Carson City, we want to thank Sierra Veterinary Hospital, Quail Ridge Animal Hospital, and Lone Mountain Veterinary Hospital. We team with them. We support small business. We're grateful for their partnership with us, and we certainly appreciate how they're helping us help our community animals. And then just briefly, some of our fundraisers are Wolf Wine and Whiskers, and Sheriff Furlong always does the most amazing job emceeing for us. Our engraved pavers and tiles. We team with the Barracuda Golf Tournament in the admissions. We have our pooch plunge, and we thank Carson City so much and the Aquatic Center for opening up the pool. That is just such a fun day. We have our Cassie Garage Sale. Our pictures with Santa, and we team with Benson's Feet and Tac for that, and we're so grateful. We have Nevada Day, which was just delightful. And this year, we teamed with nine other nonprofits since the theme was diversity. And economic diversity, nonprofits really add a lot to the economy. And so we really reached out and had a delightful day with other nonprofits. And then we have our Cassie K-9. And Silver Strike CrossFit teamed with us this year. And then here's just from Nevada Day this year. And then each school year, we reach out to the schools. And then each school year, we reach out to the schools. And Cassie helps empower students to make a positive difference in their community. I just spoke at Empire Elementary two weeks ago, just to remind kiddos that we can all make a difference. And that's how Cassie was formed, really, just deciding that we wanted to help and then giving people that opportunity to do so. And so our students, we have two students this year working with us for their senior projects. Last year, we had two students as well. And as you can see, we have elementary students who are super excited about helping the critters. So we meet the third Thursday of each month at the NHS in the community room, 5:30, and we invite everyone to join us. And we just really want to celebrate the spirit of community, collaboration, coming together to help people help their animals, and coming together to help animals find homes or get back to their homes. And this dog that you see in the picture, that was the dog that was in the play yard. He was there for months and months and months, and you can see, he finally found his forever home, and it's quite a celebration. So I would just like to thank our community, and I'd like to thank Chuck and Patty for being here today, and really for all our volunteers. It truly takes a village, and we have quite a strong one, I must say. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. A quick question. So independent of the infrastructure issues, how are we doing in terms of taking care of pets? And how's our animal shelter working? What's your take on that?
You know what? Our animal shelter is working very well. And the biggest, in my opinion, but a huge plus, is that it's a shelter where people want to visit, and they see that the animals are well cared for. And really, that's the key, is if people aren't willing to go to a shelter, the animals don't get adopted. And so people want to go to our shelter, and they appreciate what the shelter's doing. And when we were meeting for Nevada Day, they were reaching out and they were having a volunteer training day, which is wonderful. And again, it's just about that community support. It's wonderful that our shelter is open seven days a week. It's only closed two days a year. That is Thanksgiving and Christmas, which is incredible, and that's the power of a nonprofit.
And while we're passing out some compliments, I probably ought to say thank you to, not probably, we should say thank you to AVK that provided the two fire plugs.
Oh, my gosh, absolutely.
Those are not cheap things anymore. If you haven't, for some reason, animals, dogs particularly, like those fire plugs, so. And then Matty's, how are we getting along all right with Matty's these days? Matty's group, the national group?
We're getting along very well with Matty's. And in fact, three of our Cassie members just attended the Matty's Pet Project in Nevada Conference last week, and that was in Reno, and had opportunities to learn, just, you know, gain great ideas about fundraising and great ideas about animal handling and outreach and networking. And while Cassie isn't a shelter per se, we definitely help support the shelter. But this was a conference where 54 different shelters and nonprofits were represented, which was quite wonderful.
Anything else from Lisa? John, Supervisor Barrett.
Yeah, as a member of this board, I wasn't here when the animal shelter and the Public Works Project for Wastewater were done. So I want to thank my colleagues to my right because everybody pitched in, and previous boards as well. You come along and you bask in this glory, but you didn't do much to help it, so I just wanted to say that. And Lisa, you get a lot of thanks, too.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
And I remember this supervisor to my left putting us over the top.
I did.
History, history.
The animal shelter.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Lisa, very much, and thanks to Cassie for all you do in our community. I mean, you know, it really is one of those, it's like Pets of the Homeless and the others that you mentioned, you know, it, one voice can get a lot of voices started in this community, and that's a good thing. That's how, because we're one community. And, you know, when somebody wants to know the power of one, or the power of a nonprofit, just take a look at that animal shelter, and you'll see what that's all about. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We could take public comment. Anybody on public comment on this one? I don't see any. Okay. Lisa, you're off the hook.
Yay.
All right. Let's take up now item 12B. This is, we've got two applications here, one from Berkeley and one from Redwood Materials for state incentives. Andrew, while you're coming up, I know there's a disclosure to be made. Supervisor Bunkowski, you want to talk to us a little bit?
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I'm a partner in the real estate brokerage firm of NAI Alliance Carson City. In that capacity, I represent Berkeley International. Because of my substantial and continuing business relationship with Berkeley International, I feel that the judgment of a reasonable person in this situation may be materially affected. Therefore, I will not be voting on the Berkeley incentive. I will be voting and participating on the Redwood Materials. So we'll have to do two motions.
We can do two motions. Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. My wife works for the Governor's Office of Economic Development, but she is the administrator for the community development block grant funds in Nevada's rural counties and has nothing to do with Carson City, Reno, or Las Vegas, or Clark and Washoe Counties. So I will also be, I will be voting on both of these because there's no conflict in my view.
All right. Any other disclosures, discussion? All right. Andrew.
Good morning.
Tell us why we're losing all this money and why we get notified of it, but we can't do squat about it.
Okay.
So tell me how much I'm losing. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. For the record, Andrew Haskin, Director of Business Development for Northern Nevada Development Authority. So as you mentioned, I have two companies that I'm going to present today. What I'll do is I'll go through the Berkeley International one first. I've got a pre-prepared statement, just so I stay on topic, and then I'll open it up for questions, and then we'll do the same thing for the Redwood Materials one. Okay? So as I mentioned, I'm here today to present Berkeley International for the purpose of seeking the city's support for state relocation incentives. The company is applying for the sales and use tax abatement, the personal property tax abatement, the modified business tax abatement, and the real property tax abatement for recycling. Berkeley International is a family-owned business that manufactures environmentally-friendly molded fiber products. The process takes 100% recycled paper, breaks it down, and blends it with water before reforming it into a finished product. A common example of this type of product is an egg carton. In addition to supplying much of the wine packaging to Northern California, the company supplies protective packaging for numerous products in Utah and California. Berkeley International has been in business for five years and has decided to move their manufacturing operation to Nevada because the state offers incentives and utility rates that will help with future growth. Berkeley International's Nevada location would become their manufacturing hub and would seek to grow locally. As part of this project, Berkeley International will hire 28 employees initially, with an average wage of $22.96 per hour, which is higher than the statewide average wage. All hiring for this facility will be done within the state of Nevada. Hiring will have a peak during the first two years as a whole, as a whole new staff will be required, followed by steady growth in the years to follow. Berkeley International plans to invest over $1.6 million in new capital equipment and begin operations by quarter four of 2019. NIDA fully supports Berkeley International's incentive application and respectfully requests city support of this application. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You know, we kid each other about the abatements and things like this, but, you know, they really are there for a purpose in order to hopefully offset the economic gains that a community is going to get by doing these things. So take my comments and the attempt at humor that I walk with.
I totally understand.
Supervisor Barrett.
Jokingly, but seriously, any way to require the employees to live in Carson?
To require them to live in Carson? Unfortunately, no. You know, as you know, our workforce tends to move around quite a bit, and so, you know, they come from all over. But I would imagine that a large portion would live in Carson.
Good morning. How are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. So I'm just a little bit more interested in the process. So when you read through the statute, it really just requires that the city be notified and not really support or not support the incentive. We don't have to, right?
That is correct. I think you have to submit a letter of acknowledgement.
And so I think, I'm not so sure I'm not more interested. I think it's great that the company is coming, but I don't really receive the overall package to make the decision on whether or not they qualify for an incentive or should receive an incentive. So I wonder if really we should just acknowledge.
Take care of that one, I think.
Yeah, so, because-
Move it forward.
Yeah. I don't have a problem moving forward, but just wanted to make sure on the law, we're only obligated to acknowledge.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other board comments? Public comments on this issue? Anybody? All right. We'll take a motion then on Berkeley, and we have one extension here.
I move to acknowledge and support an application for Berkeley International for state incentives through the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
How about taking the word?
Support.
Just say I acknowledge.
I acknowledge.
Yeah.
I move to acknowledge an application for Berkeley International for state incentives through the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
Yeah, that works. We'll make it work for you. Okay. All right. All right. On the motion, discussion, hearing on all in favor, signal. Discussion's in order.
I just wanted to say that personally, I support this.
All right. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay. Let's take up the next one.
All right. Thank you. So once again, same thing. So for the record, I'm Andrew Haskin, Director of Business Development for Northern Nevada Development Authority. I'm here today to present Redwood Materials for the purpose of seeking the city's support for state relocation incentives. The company is applying for the sales and use tax abatement, the personal property tax abatement, and the modified business tax abatement. Redwood Materials was founded in 2017 by a team of engineers and scientists who saw the growing problem of electronic waste ending up in landfills. The United Nations University estimates that 44.7 million metric tons of used electronics are generated each year, only 20% of which is recycled, with a recoverable value of $63.6 billion. The company uses a sustainable process to recover technology materials from post-consumer and post-industrial electronics. Redwood plans to expand from its current location in Milpitas, California, to Carson City, Nevada. The company plans to hire and train employees from Northern Nevada and begin producing new technology materials at the Carson City facility. The expansion plan to Carson City involves a purchase and installation of several new pieces of processing equipment, which will require hiring additional engineers and technical staff. The plan is to hire a total of 31 employees over the first two years of operation. In addition to processing material at the Carson City facility, future plans may also include relocation of headquarters and research and development staff. The decision to expand to Carson City was due to several factors, including the business tax structure, availability of qualified workforce, cost of living, and logistic advantages offered by the region. Once again, NIDA fully supports Redwood Materials incentive application and respectfully requests city support of this application. And one thing that I didn't mention in this one was that the average wage for this project was $27.42 per hour.
Under Redwood is $27 an hour?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
How many people are employed at that rate?
So there'll be 31 people. They're planning to hire 31 employees, so that'll be the average. I don't know what the, I have the actual breakdown, but they actually asked us to keep that confidential.
Do you know where they're going in Carson City?
They're still, so they're finalizing something right now. I told they were, I was told they were very close to having something.
All right. All right. Anybody? Public comment? Anybody? Board members?
Just want to say that whether we acknowledge your support, I personally very much support this one, as well as the previous one.
I just want to comment, I support this as well. I mean, these are higher-paying jobs that we need in this community, so that's great.
I think that it's good to see the number of companies that are relocating to Carson City. At the last meeting, I announced that a company's relocated here that makes American flags from American products, and that Carson City will be the only site west of the Mississippi where American flags are made. We just closed escrow yesterday for another machine shop that's moving here from California. And now we have these companies that are moving here, and they're all high-paying, quality jobs. So it's good to see our economy growing and diversifying and bringing higher-paying jobs here instead of just low-income service jobs. Good job.
Thank you. I completely agree.
It's called sustainability. All right.
Can I just comment?
Yeah, go, go.
So I just wanted to comment, the reason I want to just acknowledge them is it's important for the public to understand with the approval of these, too, if the state does indeed, if they qualify for the abatements. It's still important to recognize that that means the city won't be collecting almost $900,000 for the school and the city. And so that's why I love that the companies are coming here. I think it's just super, but I'm just not in a position without the confidential information that the companies are allowed to retain and I don't get to review. So I'm just not comfortable on the surface giving up $900,000 for our school, district, and city without more information, but I am just thrilled the companies are coming here. Thrilled. Thank you.
Well, I think if we do a motion, Andrew, if we do a motion similar to what we did where we acknowledged receipt, you've got it on the record, people's individual support for this project, so that's, you know, I think we're taking care of both sides of that because there's, it's a legitimate point that, you know, I know what happened with legislature, you know, the local governments wanted some say-so on this stuff, and really kind of the only say-so they got was the right to receive a notice of what's going to be going on. And I kind of get that in a way where people don't have to, why make them jump through a whole lot of different hoops if they're coming here? So you have to trust what Goet has done. In my view, you know, Goet is, over the years, at least that I've been here, has done a fantastic job of trying to vet these. But as Lori says, we don't have all that. We haven't been given all that. And if they want us to, if the legislature wants us to pass judgment on approval or up or down, which I don't think they do, you know, we can take care of that, too. So, I mean, and, so I think, you know, you'll be, you'll be fine with this. And if not, you let us know, because.
Oh, yeah, no, this will work perfect. So, yeah, as you pointed out, this, it's what the statute says, so, no, it works great, and it is on the record that everyone supports it, and I completely understand. You know, just so everybody knows kind of how these incentives work or how they come about is that most other states offer some kind of incentive. So Nevada and the legislature put these forward to make us more competitive, to win some of these projects, because for both of these projects, we were competing against other states. So without them, you know, it's, maybe they would have ended up here, maybe they wouldn't, but we don't know. It really depends, so. So I completely understand your position on that.
And hopefully at $27 an hour, they have plenty of, plenty of money to put back in the community. All right. All right. Anybody else? Public comment? Don't see any. Motion's in order. Supervisor Barrett, go.
Okay. I move to acknowledge an application from Redwood Materials for state incentives through the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. I think you've heard the discussion during the, while we were discussing this item about support. So on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you very much. Thanks to NIDA for bringing some people here. $22 an hour, and I know that's just one piece of the economic pie, but, but those are some good numbers for people. I mean, because my own, my personal view is, is, you know, what's happening here on some of the, even though we're full employment, we're shoving people out the bottom of the employment ladder until wages catch up with wherever we are in the economics, and they, so, anyway, for a later date. Okay? Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take up item 10. No, wait a minute. Excuse me. 13A. I got to go here. Okay. Okay. Adam Treasurer.
Good morning.
Selling property again.
Hopefully not, but it's one of the steps we have to take.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, I'm here today because, per statute, I need to have, to receive an order from the board to proceed forward with possibly selling these properties. There's eight properties on the list that is before you, but since then, one of them is actually already paid, so we're already down to seven.
Gail, can you give us just a brief update on the two commercial facilities that I'd asked you about, the communications tower and then the gas station? Like, you've had conversations with him, and I believe the intent is, at least on the gas station, that he's going to get caught up, and on the communications tower, there's a title issue.
I'll do the easy one first. It's a gas station in Minniart on South Carson Street. A gal in our office has talked to the owner, and it is his intent to start paying $4,500 a month, and hopefully, he'll be paid off by January, is what he wants to do. He's been in this situation before and always pays the taxes before the time to sell comes, so I'm confident he will. On the cell tower, we are trying to track them down, the owner. We've heard crickets from them since the bills were sent, so these people were looking for a payment for the taxes from fiscal year 15, '16 forward. I sent an email to an address that we had from last December for somebody who's in charge of property within this whole telephone area, and already, it has been forwarded to somebody else, well, to the same person, but at a different location at this point. So, we're trying to track them down. I think it's a matter of the right people never got the bill. But this also kind of brings to light one of the problems we do have, is our assessor's office has to work off of recorded documents as to who the owner is and what the address is. These telephone companies do a lot of mergers and acquisitions and all of this, and none of that is recorded. So, that's why we're having trouble tracking them down. Another title issue is on that one that only owed the $41.65. Both of those people that are down as illegal owners are actually deceased, and the family never changed title on the property, so. And we're not allowed to practice law, so we can't tell them what to do. So, it's just, it's not the first time we've had these issues, but we're trying to track them all down. Okay.
Anybody else? Public comment? I don't hear any. Okay. Make motions in order.
I move to order and direct the Carson City Treasurer to sell each property described on the record after giving notice of sale for a total amount not less than the amount of taxes, costs, penalties, and interest legally chargeable against each property.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Thank you, Gail. And thank your staff, too, you know. I always, it's always so nice, you know, at both the assessor's office and the treasurer's office, when you come in, people are smiling, and you, and, you know, both of you deal in different things, but they both deal with money. And, you know, it takes understanding that, you know, sometimes those are difficult decisions for people who, so anyway, your folks do a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay. All right. Let's take up item 14, then. Buying cars, who's doing this? Zach, you're back with more fleet.
Zach is back.
Zach is back, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Carol, why don't you give us a top line, and Zach, tell us what we're doing and why we should do it.
All right. Good morning, Carol Lakers, purchasing and contracts. This is to approve a purchase of 24 new vehicles for the fleet, various departments throughout the city. Again, utilizing some bid list, competitive bid list, from the state of Nevada, as well as some other cooperative purchasing agreements. And this is for a total of $1,678, oh my gosh, 1 million, it's always so much money. $1,678,127.28, and this is all budgeted.
Good morning. Zach, good, Carson City Fleet Supervisor. So, our purchaser today is actually replacing some of our support equipment as a new backhoe for the cemetery, a new garbage truck for the Parks Department, something that obviously runs around and services a large portion of our community, as well as our black and whites that patrol the streets. And then, we also have some of ancillary equipment, our smaller vehicles that are supporting streets as well. One of the larger ones for streets is our large bucket truck, which is shared between a couple of departments, primarily for doing tree trimming, as well as it services everything from our water tanks to communication towers, or anything from telemetry stations that service our wastewater or water. So, yeah, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just give us the age range of what's being replaced, the ones that are going out, and what are we doing with them?
Most of the products, it's based upon age and hours. A lot of the vehicles that we are replacing are over an average year of 10 years old. Excuse me. And we send these vehicles to auction, and currently, at auction, we are getting more than what we'd get for even private party sale compared to sales off of like, you know, Craigslist or out of the newspaper as well. So, we are not really expanding our fleet, we are just direct replacement.
And since it's hours, instead of age, what hours have they got on them?
So, usually, equipment that is ranging in the age from 8,000 to 12,000 hours is getting replaced. You know, we find that to be kind of like the sweet spot for replacement, because we look at it from a point of view of that, now we're kind of coming into an unreliable state of, you know, repair. We can't keep up with the repairs that keep coming back and forth on these type of pieces of equipment.
Thank you, just wanted that on the record.
Yes.
Public comment? Anybody? Board? Somebody want to make a motion to?
I move to approve the purchase of 24 vehicles for several departments throughout the city, utilizing the competitive bid list and cooperative purchasing agreements indicated in the agenda item, for a total not to exceed amount of $1,678,127.28.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, it's kind of planned to happen because through the budget process. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much. All right. More money, Zach.
He'll take everything we give him.
It's the end of December, yeah.
I'll be back.
I'll be back. All right. All right. I think we're ready to recess and take a Board of Health. So, we're going to be in recess for about 10 minutes while we convene the Board of Health, so let's come back in about 10 minutes, and we'll call the next meeting in order.[1070.08]
Ready or not, here we come.
All right.
I will call the order of the Board of Health for November 1st of 2018. Would you call the roll, please?
Member Abad?
Here.
Member Bonkowski?
Here.
Vice Chair Kroll?
Here.
Member Bagwell?
Here.
Member Barrett?
Here.
Member Furlong?
Excuse us.
Chair Pintar?
Highly unlikely.
Coram is present.
Thank you. All right. I will entertain any public comment if there is such to be had. Hearing none, we'll go on to item 18, which is approval of the minutes from July 19th, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2018 as presented.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We will go on to item 19, which is my report. Brief today, I don't do a whole heck of a lot these days. Wait, Nikki says, wait a minute. Anyway, we are ending, near to ending, a very successful flu immunization campaign for the city. Jeannie's going to give us more information later on, but there have been, there will be well over 50 different events that Carson City Health and Human Services has held throughout the county to immunize our population. And I'm very proud of the efforts of the staff as well as the volunteer efforts that have gone out into our community. I don't have the statistics, but I do believe that Carson City is very close to the top in our state as far as immunizing its citizens. I have attended a number of conferences recently, and people are definitely surprised that our influenza rate is so high for our, in our city efforts. Couple of upcoming things I wanted to mention. Nikki and I are developing an adult immunization campaign. One of the difficulties, I think, is that adults forget that they need their baby shots too. And so, there's a significant amount of illness, not just in our community, but across the state and across the nation, due to diseases that are preventable by adult immunizations. We all remember, well, we don't all, but many of us remember to get our flu vaccine every year, but you forget to get your tetanus vaccine every seven to 10 years, you forget your pneumonia vaccine and other things. So, an awareness campaign, we think, we think will be a low-cost and high-yield way to work on that. And then, the other effort that will soon be coming up in this legislative session is that, and I'll ask Nikki to give a few more details, is that public health funding is coming to the forefront for the legislature. As you probably are aware, Nevada has no public health funding. Consequently, we are 51st in the nation for, 50th? Okay, sorry. Well, there are 51, but anyway, we're not high as far as funding public health efforts for the state. And unfortunately, that trickles down to the counties because we, most of us are not Clark and Washoe County, and they do have a little bit of funding through their counties. But anyway, having said that, there is an initiative to develop some public health funding on a statewide basis. Nikki, do you want to add any more details?
Yes, please. So, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. So, this is a collaboration with the state Division of Public and Behavioral Health, Southern Nevada Health District, Washoe County Health District, and Nevada Public Health Association. And we have been giving some presentations to the Legislative Committee on Healthcare, and then another advisory committee at the state. These presentations included what does public health funding look like in Nevada? And we, right now, are $6.75 per capita, and like Dr. Pintar said, we're 50th in the union. The U.S. average is $36.11 per capita, and the range is $5.74 to $139.35. So, we've been giving education on what's called Public Health 3.0, which is community involvement for public health, our three Community Health Needs Assessments, and our Community Health Improvement Plans, which we don't have funding to do some of the work that these assessments show. And just, we gave a history of, we used to have public health funding and what happened to it during different cuts in 1991 and 2002. And then, starting to talk about what those foundational public health services are. And what I really want to let this board know is, so the Legislative Committee on Healthcare, they approved to submit a BDR. This BDR is going to look at appropriating $5 per capita to build public health infrastructure and support foundational public health services. That will take us one, will get one step higher, but it's a, it's a start. It will require the Department of Health and Human Services to establish a public health improvement fund, and that will be under NRS 439. And then, it is directing the use of the fund and the duties of the state, and it's going to require eligible agencies to conduct a community health needs assessment. And then, it's going to establish a process to evaluate health and health needs of the residents. We have asked NACO for their support, and we intend to ask League of Cities for their support. So, I just wanted to notify you all of what is taking place at the state level legislatively.
So, Nikki, would any of that be allocated towards mental health, since that's been identified as a definite void that needs to be addressed?
Yes. So, each community that would receive the funds, then it will be based on their community health needs assessment. And as we know, ours has behavioral health component, and so does Washoe County. So, that's how these funds will filter down. We don't really have all the particulars yet, but that's what we are moving towards.
Anyway, I'm pretty excited, and I'm hopeful that it will at least get some support in the legislature. It's a definite step forward because other, other efforts have not been successful. All right. I will entertain a motion to accept my report, please.
I move to accept the health officer's report as presented.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will go on to item 19B. Colleen is here to give us the periodic report from Vitality.
Carson City Substance Abuse Program. And I'm here to talk about what we've been doing since April. So, as you can see at the top of the paper we passed out, that's our, pretty much, a review of declines that we've had since April, broke down by gender and level of care. So, for those of you that don't know, Vitality's medical director is Dr. Chris Hiley. He's here in Carson City. Vitality Unlimited Carson City, we are state certified through the Department of Health and Human Services and the SAP to Agency Substance Abuse Treatment and Prevention. And we use the Addiction Medicine ASAM to evaluate our clients for placement and level of care that they will receive. And then, the following are the levels of care. The Civil Protective Custody, or CPC. Withdrawal Management, or you probably know that better by detox. Now, we have Residential Services. Intensive outpatient care, which we just started in July, and outpatient services, which we started in July. We are licensed for 25 beds, and we use 16 of them for residential. The others are for CPCs or withdrawal management beds. We screen with consent and in compliance with the state and federal HIPAA regulations for TB and HIV/AIDS for all clients entering our residential program, and the results are communicated through the state compliance coordinator. We have treated 100% of all clients that were referred to us from Carson City. And they were placed in the Vitality system as either requested by the referral source or as we deemed the level of care that was needed.
My question, with regards to numbers, and have you had to turn people away for lack of beds? Are the courts referring more than, than the capacity that you have?
No. We, we have an intake coordinator that's always on top of how many beds we have, and so she knows how many beds we have in Vitality, how many beds we have in Carson City, you know, at our facilities. So, we rarely have to turn anybody away. I don't know of that. They might have to wait a day or two until a bed is freed up, but we take them in. If we don't have a bed for them in Carson, then they would go to Elko. But I think that's only happened a couple times that I'm familiar with, and I've been here there a couple of years.
I had a related question, because on the last report, there was a no-bed, no-show column, and that's not on this report. So, you're saying that basically the no-bed is zero?
Pretty much. Yes, we have, we've changed our system a little bit, and we have a new intake coordinator, so.
Okay.
And the wait seems to have been reduced also.
Got it. I understand. Can you provide a denominator number for me? It's clear that our Carson City residents are being accommodated, but total number of persons, I guess, that are within the system?
The only one I know for sure is that we got 43 residents in that timeframe from the specialty courts. I know we've had several, do you have that number at all?
I just asked him, 16 beds. The 16 beds are.
Oh, is that what she's asking? I thought she meant how many number.
I guess I'm asking about the scope of, of your scope of services for all, not just Carson City.
Oh, what we have, what Vitality has available?
Right. What kind of, yeah.
In, well, our co-op is in Elko. And at Elko, they have a 46-bed facility, residential facility with detox and the same levels of care, the civil protective custody, withdrawal management, residential, intensive outpatient, outpatient, plus they have transitional living. That's one thing that we haven't started here in Carson, but we're certainly exploring because we know the need for housing.
Transitioned me into my next question. I understand that a substantial grant has been recently awarded to, what plans do you have for that grant?
What? Yeah. I'm really focused on residential, but Colleen is involved in the CCBHC development. I've looked at some properties and stuff, but she knows more about that.
Okay. I don't know what that acronym is, but maybe you can help.
Sure. Okay. Good morning. For the record, my name is Colleen Lawrence with Moxie Health Policy and consultant for Vitality Unlimited with all their healthcare projects. CCBHC is a very long acronym, and we try not to use it too much. It is the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. It is a national demonstration program, and Nevada was awarded it several, a couple years ago. Vitality was one of the very, we're excited about how they were awarded the first part of the demonstration grant up in Elko. It was then awarded another expansion opportunity in the federal program to go at two different levels, whether the state side or the federal grant. So, yes, we, underneath Vitality, had gone for the grant at the federal level and was awarded a $4 million grant for two years, beginning October 1st. Just so we're all clear, this is all brand-new money coming into our system of $4 million. It began October 1st and runs for two years. It is a demonstration program underneath a federal grant. It is a medical, behavioral, and substance use grant. It's completely integrated system. They have a offer on a property right now for about a 5,000-square-foot facility in Carson City, and the reason why we're not building new bricks and mortar, because we have lots of facilities that can be utilized in Carson City. And obviously, that goes back to our economic development in the city also. And it also is fast. It has to be brought up within four months. So, Mayor, we can use your assistance. We are also bringing about 20 healthcare positions into Carson City for this. How we did this in Elko, though, is we did national recruitments, you know, because we only have so many people, we don't want to be stealing around, we want to do recruitments, and that's what we're doing. We're looking at several marriage and family therapists, licensed clinical social workers, peer support, licensed medical professionals, case managers, and office staff. And we've already done a couple job fairs, we worked all around to see what we can do. There's actually two facilities we're looking at. We're looking at Carson City and in Dayton, because we understand that there's an influx on the system in Carson City and into Dayton, so we're working together. It's a very innovative project in the fact that the Dayton project will be hopefully co-located in a housing development, because we know that if you take care of individuals in their housing area, it will make them healthier also in their healthcare arena. So, we're trying to do something very innovative. The project must go up, I think I said this, within four months, so by February 1st, we must be certified. Other than that, we will be doing lots of community involvement planning meetings. We're working with Partnership Carson City to host the meetings over there and to bring in the community. There's nine required services. And when I say nine required services, please understand, one of the required services, mental health services. So, it's, I like to just call them nine required categories, not services. And it is, again, a partnership with our community and our community current providers, because it's, we know that there's a need across the city already, and there's such a need to work together, and there's such an underdeveloped need for behavioral health services, as you had said earlier today, that we can work together and build several of these clinics around here in all of our rural counties, and the need would still not be met. So, we're excited to bring in a foundation service to add to the outpatient services here.
That was my question. These are outpatient services in the 5,000.
It is outpatient. It's outpatient services.
That wouldn't impact what we do at the.
It's just going to increase the, the foundation of the already services that are here.
Got it. Got it. Other questions?
Not a question, but I just wanted to say, I am familiar with Dr. Chris Hiley, who you mentioned is your physician. And with the tip of the hat to all the good physicians in our community, he was my personal physician for quite a time, and he's a good one, so, good luck. He, he will do good work for you.
Thank you. We're excited.
So, mine's just a general question. I noticed on the residential services that you have an average length of stay of 28.51 days. Is that because it's indicative of the pay source that's related to it, or you really believe that that's all the service that's necessary?
That's just what it says. An average length to stay. We keep them for as long as they need care, and that's based on the ASAM criteria, that's a placement criteria. So, some of them need 45 days. Some of them don't need 28 days. They need a shorter period of time, they have a job to get back to, they have a home to return to. We can, you know, stabilize them and then discharge them to outpatient, so that would reduce their, you know, our intensive outpatient, so we step down their level of care. With all of this, they advance through different levels of care. Residential is only one of them, and 28 days is about the average length that they stay in there. We would keep them much longer if they have no place to go, or they're waiting for a bed in a transitional house or another program. We've kept them up to 90 days.
And so, then, do you track your own clients to see if you have recidivism back into residential?
Yes.
That's kind of what I'm after.
Yes.
How successful are you in the step-down program versus they've got to come back and cycle through again?
Well, since January, we've had more opportunity to do that because we've added the different levels of care, and hopefully with the CBCHC, we can do that, and we can hook them into our substance abuse component there, and we can track them for a longer period of time. We do things like follow-up calls and that kind of thing, but I don't have all those stats. We have a person that keeps track of all that. Okay. Yep.
On your, the figures, the, what happens when somebody completes their two- or three-day detox? What happens to those folks?
Well, while they're in detox, we talk.
After, after they complete detox.
We talk to them about what they need, and we talk. We talk to them about what they need, and we talk to them about the results of their assessment. They could go on to residential. Like I say, if they just, they have a job, we would sign them up for our outpatient clinic. Some of them come from other agencies here that do outpatient. And so then we refer them back to whoever referred them to us. You know, we kind of work with them to decide what they need.
So the question is, if they've gone through detox, can they ask to stay there as a resident for 30 days?
Sometimes they ask to stay, yes.
And can they do that, or what criteria is required for them to do that?
The criteria for them to do that is that we go, again, by the ASAM, they have to, it has to, their use of substances has to have impacted their life on certain, you know, criteria, that it's out of control, they have no place to live, they have, they don't recognize that it's impacting their life. There's several different criteria that we go by.
So just the last question here. When you have, when you show the number of people in detox, can you assume that those folks are going to go on to take a bed?
Not always. Sometimes, like I said, they have someplace to return to.
Or do we put?
We try to encourage them if we think they need, but we can't hold them if they have someplace else to be.
If they have a healthy atmosphere to return in a, sorry, this is Colleen for the record. If they have a healthy atmosphere to return and a strong social support, then you can support them in an outpatient program. But as Judy's saying, there's medical criteria that wraps around them, and one of the things, I think what your concern is, if they're going to return to the street with no strong social support, then that's when the criteria really looks at how strong is your support system at home? If you don't have a strong support system and the chance of you relapsing and coming right back to detox within a couple of days, then you're probably, most likely, a strong candidate to stay in residential treatment. Does that answer your question, sir?
And if they don't want to, then we try to call in all our referral sources, you know, Crossroads, Empowerment Center, Ridge House, any place that has transitional living or a different kind of support system for them and refer them there.
The, I guess the best way to say it is, when you're looking at criteria, when we're talking ASAM, and it's kind of probably not fair to just say, hey, we keep talking about ASAM, it looks at a person's living and social support, it looks at their medical conditions, it looks at their addiction, it looks at their behavioral conditions. So there's, there's like five or six different points that it looks at a person holistically, and it goes through this assessment each time for every time they hit the system to say, what, where are you at? And it judges based upon that to say, where should you go, and how can we assist you?
Right, they're called dimensions. We evaluate them on the six dimensions, yeah.
You need help on the other stuff, come to Grant. I don't know what I can do, but you tell me what you want me to do, and I'll do it.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? No? Is there any questions from the public? Just throwing that out there. All right, otherwise, I will entertain a motion for acceptance of that report.
I'll do it. I move to accept Vitality Unlimited's report as presented.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ladies. We'll see you in May.
I would just like to add that you're all welcome to come over and tour our unit if you'd like to see what we're doing.
Thank you.
Can I ask just one follow-up last question here? Wait. How does your service differ, if at all, from what services are provided at Mallory Center?
I don't, I'm not familiar with all the services that are provided at Mallory, but I think they have the mental health component that we don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Where are we? We are on item Casper, the friendly ghost. Okay, 19C. Jeannie Freeman will come along to tell us about our first in Nevada Casper survey.
Good morning, Jeannie Freeman, Public Health Preparedness Manager for the record. I'm actually going to turn this over to my colleague Jessica Rapp. She was the incident commander, she was the leader of the project, and then we'll both be here for questions for you.
Hi, guys. As Jeannie said, my name is Jessica Rapp, and I was the incident commander for the Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response, and we're here today to present our results to you guys. So in total, we had 25 volunteers for Casper. This did not include the Carson City Health and Human Services staff members. The volunteers spent 390 hours out in the community conducting these surveys. We completed 188 surveys, and the goal for it was 210, so we had a completion rate of 89.5%. And according to the CDC, the minimum percentage of households required to conduct the Casper would be 80%, so we were above the minimum with that. So we were very successful. We had collaboration with our partners, including Southern Nevada Health District. They helped with the planning process, along with Washoe County and the state. And then we had staff members from Washoe County Health District and the State Division of Public and Behavioral Health come and help with our Casper. We had dedicated volunteers. We had a handful of them that were there every day of Casper out in the community. They never complained, they were very excited. And we were able to collect baseline information about our community so we can plan our program to help our community. So these results are based on weighted data, which means the data accounts for the fact that we only reached a certain percentage of our population, and we can do some different math equations and generalize it to the entire Carson City population. So approximately 57% of our community felt that they were prepared for an emergency, which is above the average. If asked to evacuate, 79.3% of our community would do so, and we had a lot of respondents say that it depended upon what type of emergency it was, so that is something to consider. And a good portion of those would be going to a shelter or a home outside of the area if they had to evacuate. We also learned that our community would like to receive information during an emergency over television, from the radio, or through a phone call. But only 33.4% of our community has actually heard of the Emergency Alert System Code RED. So that is something that we want to work with our fire department on and try to increase awareness of Code RED. And then 34% of our community commutes out of Carson City for work, and the average commute time was 30 minutes. So we can assume probably to Reno or up to the lake for that. Are there any questions? There will be a report that we're in the process of finalizing, and once it's finalized, it will be made available online for the public to see, and it will be sent out to our community partners if we can collaborate with them.
I appreciate your work. I saw the little troops of people walking through the neighborhoods. I told them to go talk to my mother, but they were afraid to. One of the, people may have questions about why the 34%, or not why, but why that was included as a statistic, the 34% of people. It has a couple of implications for preparedness. One is that people may not be able to return home, you know, if there's an emergency. The other is that a fair number of those commuters are people who work for first responders or first responding agencies, and I think it goes both ways, is that we may be able to make the assumption that about a third of our first responders don't live in our community as well. So it's kind of an indirect measure, but it does help explain why we asked that question. Are there other questions that you have for?
Thank you. I'm the resident skeptic, or at least I think I am, about-
I think it's called permution?
Yeah, well, that too. About polling, surveying, modeling, et cetera. How scientific was your, was your 100 and some, 188 responses?
So we followed the same procedure that the center's disease control and prevention provides, so it's all of their methods. And the survey accounted for the entire population of Carson City, and it went through a random selection of different areas, and those areas that were selected were based on the probability of them being selected. So we didn't just open a map and, you know, randomly touch different areas of Carson City. It was all through statistical methods, so it's very scientific.
I understand, thank you. That's one matter. And then the projections that come from that, in your view, are accurate to say 89%, 34%, et cetera. That's all I wanted to check on, thank you.
Yes, we were able to reach very, we reached most of Carson City, the different demographics within Carson City, so we were able to generalize it.
Jeannie Freeman, for the record, just to follow up with that, member Barrett. Through the process, it's a two-step process, so we used the census clusters. Out of those census clusters, 30 of them were selected, and then there was random selection within those clusters of the households. And because we were able to reach over that 80%, the survey is considered valid, and because of the randomization, we're actually able to articulate those results across the entire city. One of the things for you all to be aware of, too, is we went into multiple diverse neighborhoods. We had translators and interpreters with us, so we did have people answering our surveys in Spanish, we had them answering in English, we got feedback from folks if they felt that they needed additional translation in Chinese. So we were able to make sure that we had that diversity, and it occurred through randomization. So it wasn't by us picking, it was through that whole process. So we're very comfortable that this is a valid survey for us.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. I'm never even sure if I believe in the scientific modeling, but that gives me more of a level of confidence. Thank you.
I have to say that I was, I think pleasantly surprised that nearly 60% of the community feels they are prepared for an emergency. Now, if they're actually prepared for an emergency is another question that I think needs to be explored.
So Susan, to follow up with your comment on that, we asked them if they felt they were prepared. Almost 60% said that they felt they were prepared, and then we had a series of six or seven follow-up questions, which would indicate that that is not an accurate assessment. And so, again, it's getting out some education in doing that. And one of the things that we did do is every household that we went to that completed the survey, we distributed preparedness information to them. So we shared information about the flu pod, which I'll share with you here in a little bit, and then we also gave them information about five steps, five initial steps we would want them to take to start getting themselves prepared. And we gave it to them in a Ziploc baggie that had printed on the front of it different documents that we're recommending that they have copies of, so that if they had to evacuate, that they could take those with them. And so it was all about how we could continue to educate our community at the same time, and we gave them information about Code RED, and we had a lot of people who said, oh, this is great, I didn't know about it, now I want to know about it, now I want to sign up for it. So we haven't really surveyed the fire department yet to see if they've had an influx of people contacting them or trying to register for Code RED, but it is one of those tools that our community continues to try to use and wants to utilize, and another asset that we have. So we want to make sure that we're able to educate them as much as possible.
Thank you, ladies. Other?
So Jeannie, I think what you just did was a classic example of what John would call burying the lead, which is when you look at that first bullet point, 57% of our community feels that they're prepared for an emergency, that's not important information. It means nothing because it's not accurate. The point is that it's not accurate based on your follow-up questions, and that the purpose of this program is to provide them with the educational materials that they need to become prepared. So it would be interesting if we could see the backup question answers, because I think that would be way more valuable to us than some of these statements that, I mean, if John hadn't asked that question, we wouldn't even know that that was not an accurate statement.
Sure, so to follow up a little bit more on that, and I did, I buried the lead for you, so when it comes to those follow-up questions, that'll be in the full report, which we'll have available on the Health Department's website when it'll be ready, and probably in the next couple of weeks. But some of the things I think is important for us, and I don't disagree that that statistic is important, the 57%, because I think it helps us identify where the gaps are. So not only do the follow-up questions say, well, they may not have the food, they may not have the water, they may not know a route out of their neighborhood outside of the one that they typically take, but it helps us see, what have we done?
I think they do.
Well, I think, I think we've, it helps us say, maybe we haven't done a good job or done an effective job of explaining what it means to be prepared. And I think we've had a lot of different messages, and it's about us trying to make sure that we're simplifying that message, because preparedness can be overwhelming for a lot of people, and it can feel cost restrictive in many ways to ask people, or even space restrictive, if you ask people to have enough water available, and what does that look like? But it also helps us in emergency management to say, when something happens in our community, because it's not an if, it's when something happens, what do we need to be thinking about beforehand in being able to support our community as well? And how can we work with our community to have some personal accountability for their level of preparedness, because we may not be able to get there to them right away? So separating that gap of what they perceive and what the actuality is, and trying to bring that a little closer together is really going to be what our target is.
Were you able to determine, based on your follow-up questions, what you felt was the actual number, the accurate number of people that were prepared? Because my guess is it's like 10 to 12%.
I haven't looked at those statistics yet, I'm in the process of reviewing the report, but if it's not there, then we will definitely be taking a further look at that, because you do bring up a good point, is with that gap and stuff. And that, that would be some judgment for us. We asked five to six follow-up questions about preparedness. It wouldn't give an overall picture of their true level of preparedness. Some people might have copies of important documents but not have three days' worth of food available for them. Others might have water, but they may not have the documents. And so it's going to be a little bit of a different, but we'll take a look at that, and we'll give some, some assessment of that. I would say, just from the doors that I knocked on and the questions that I had, which is, this is my one and a half cents' worth of information here, you're probably looking about 15 to 20%.
So to follow up on that, it is included in the report, exactly how many, what percentage we feel our population is prepared at. And then it's mentioned as well that a limitation could be that you knock on the door and you're with, you know, Quad County Public Health Preparedness or Carson City Health and Human Services, and you're asking, do you guys think you're prepared for an emergency? They're going to tell us what they think we want to hear. So that was mentioned, that people could, oh, yeah, I'm prepared. And then as we go through the questions, we find out that they're really not. So that is mentioned as a limitation.
Susan, if you'll give me just a moment, just to follow up on that, 34% of our community that commutes out of Carson, that is one of those things that we also want to be having conversations with our school district about, not just our employers, but the school district, and that's something for us to be cognizant of when it comes to an emergency as well, because if they're commuting out, there's a good portion of those people who, with the age range and work, that they're going to likely have children within the schools or in other programs, and that's, if they can't get back into our community, what does that also look like for our community and how we prepare for an emergency?
I think we saw kind of a mini example of that with, on Nevada Day, when there was the fire on 580. And I've had a lot of people say, you know, what are you doing on the evacuation plan if we're, if we're backed up from Virginia City to here and Coombs Canyon is backed up? You know, there are other ways out of the city, but I think it's probably worthwhile to have a chat with the, with the law enforcement and public works folks about how we deal with things like that, because there were a lot of people who, for one reason or another, knew, you know, tried to take an alternative route out of Carson and couldn't get there. Fortunately, the Vice President was able to get out going on Northbound Lane, but there were a whole lot of people who were stuck.
So just to follow up on that, Mayor Cromwell, I was actually in the Emergency Operations Center and doing the messaging related to that with Rachel Snyder, and we were pushing out the messaging about the roads being closed, and we were working very closely with NHP to identify and make sure that the messaging that we were putting out was consistent with what they were putting out. We didn't want to tell everybody to head east and go through Virginia City and overwhelm Virginia City without giving them any kind of heads up. So we were working closely with NHP, and I do know that people were backed up for a while, and we felt the stress of it, because they were giving us messaging through social media that they were stressed out about it, and we were doing our very best to try to communicate. We just didn't want to overstep or contradict a message that was coming out from another agency at that time.
Well, that's a good, I mean, you know- I mean, you know, that's a good answer. Just let me say it like that. That's a good answer, because sometimes, you know, we can make up stuff as to why things happen. You guys, you know, you're obviously on it, trying to do the best you can, and I get what you're doing. And I think if people understood that, you know, some of the social media stuff might die down a little bit. But anyway, it's a word to the why, or a message to the whys, or future, whatever that saying is about, you know, if there is an emergency, this type of thing can happen, and we need to watch that.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could expound on that. This is Nikki. I was also in the EOC, and it's also our health care facilities. I was in contact with Eagle Valley Children's Center and the hospital, and they were worried about getting employees to their facilities to start their shifts. So it's even, it's looking at that also.
Further questions? Then I will entertain a motion to accept this report.
I move we accept the report.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies. Jessica, you are dismissed, but Jeanne needs to stay around, because she has Item 19D, which is the point of dispensing exercise that was recently successfully completed.
Good morning, everyone. Jeanne Freeman, again for the record, Public Health Preparedness Manager. Tomorrow will be our last of 54 flu events that we have done throughout Carson City. Carson City Health and Human Services has, once again, been very busy the last five weeks, and October is our flu season. I love fall. I'm not sure I really enjoy fall anymore. It's a very busy time, but it is a good thing. One of those flu events that we did was the Carson City Drive-Thru Flu Event that we held out at the Endot parking lot on October 6th, Saturday, October 6th. And this was for us to exercise our emergency plans for our points of distribution or our pods. And one of these hasn't been done in four years. So since 2014, the last one was done out at Public Works. And so we figured with all the new staff that we had in the city and new partners and new people in the preparedness program, we needed to exercise this and see if we were still capable of doing this. We had 78 volunteers and staff from across the city. We had EMS. The Sheriff's Office was crucial to the success of this project. Public Works was imperative with their service. Health and Human Services. We had students from the Carson High HOSA program. And then we had CERT members, our Community Emergency Response Team members, Medical Reserve Corps. There was just numerous people that were in place. With a preparedness team of four, it would not have been possible to do such an event without all of these people being there. And with the event, we ended up giving over 470 vaccines. During that time period, we had the capability of giving approximately 1,200, and we planned for that. But the total vaccine number actually is a little higher than what's up there, because we had some paperwork that got mixed up into a different bag. So we have over 470 vaccines that were given. 240 vehicles came through. One vehicle came through that had a... Those with special needs, 12 people in one vehicle. And we had vehicle experiences where children got themselves out of their car seats and were running back and forth in the car to the front and the back to try to avoid the shot and so forth. So we had lots of different experiences with what was going on. But we had no double shots were administered. It was only just one. But the average time for somebody to go through the screening and the vaccination process took about 2 minutes and 10 seconds. It took them a little bit longer to fill out their form. It took them about three or four minutes to fill out their form. One of the things we learned is that we would do, again, like we had done in the past, of posting the form on our website and putting it out for people to have ahead of time when they came in. But we were very successful. The point is for us to be able to do 400 to 450 vaccinations within an hour. Based on our population size, we want to make sure that we can achieve that to meet national standards when it comes to pods. And we had two evaluators from the State Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and they were looking at our times, along with us looking at our times. So we had a second set of eyes to make sure we weren't fudging anything. And according to their numbers, we would absolutely be able to reach that 400 to 450 per hour. So while we may not have done that each hour during the time that we were at the pod, we are capable of doing it. And it just goes to show, once again, that Carson City, all of our different departments are able to come together, work well together, and make something successful, which helps our community be better prepared. So did we meet our objectives? Absolutely. One of the things that I really appreciated with working across the city was the flexibility that so many different departments had. You know, this isn't, this wasn't a law enforcement event. This wasn't an EMS event. But, you know, we had our Rescue 51 was out there, and the team was giving shots. And we had our EMS director out there, and we had emergency management out there. And it just really showed that it didn't matter that this typically falls under public health as an activity. It became a Carson City activity. And so you should all be really proud of the departments and stuff within the city and how they came together. Next slide, please. So as you can see, lots of different groups came together, whether they be state, or they were regional, or they were local. We had a lot of impact. That was a great location. We had a lot of feedback from the people who went through the pod to tell us that they appreciated it. They were really happy. It was quick. It was convenient. I'm curious if any of you heard anything from your constituents about it.
So I'll just comment that I actually did it through this pod, because I wanted to experience it from both sides, right? Is it a good idea to do them, and is it the right way to do them? And so I happily got my shot and was sore for a week in the arm. But I thought it was well done. You guys did a super job. So thank you.
And then to continue on with the importance of if we're going to exercise something, we want to continue to educate our community. So as people left, they again got preparedness information. We had it available in English and Spanish, our two primary languages within our community, so that people were able to take that with them as well, which proved people were very excited about it. We've had some positive feedback on social media about the materials that we've been handing out, too, that they didn't feel like it was a bunch of just paper and trash, that it was actually something they could use. So that's positive for us, too.
You know, one of the things I thought of, because I read through the packet that I got, but about actually creating like a magnet that goes on your refrigerator, because admittedly, for me, I'm going to say that I read through the material but then did throw it away, versus making a small magnet with the six items to have ready, so it's in your mind and visible. Because I think the more times you see something or read something, it gets in your mind to do it. It becomes second nature or whatever. So it's just a thought that you change those to refrigerator magnets. It's just an idea.
Thank you for that feedback. We'll definitely take that with us. I know those were the same five items that we had on the fans that we gave out at the National Night Out. It's trying to keep that message consistent, so that if they see it in different formats or whatever that is, but a magnet would be, yeah, be a good idea for that. So thank you for that feedback. Next slide. So any other questions that you might have for us? We are excited for November 2nd. November 2nd, we are done with our 54 events. We are done. But if people were unable to get their flu shot during the pod or during one of the other 53 events that we had this month, we still have the vaccine available. They're welcome to come down to the Health Department on any Thursday from 8:30 to 11:30 or 1:00 to 4:00, walk-in clinic, no appointment necessary, and they can get their flu shot.
And all their other shots, too.
Yes. If they're an adult, they can be assessed. If they're a child, they can be assessed, and we'll make sure they can get them.
All right.
And this is Nikki. I just would like to add that, so as part of the paperwork that they completed, was their billing information, if they had health insurance. And so now we are busy billing. And so this effort still continues as far as the billing component. So, and those that are underinsured or had no insurance, we did have some vaccine that we do receive from the state that was available. Do you have the statistic on how many paid the $20 versus billed? You know, I'm kind of interested on those.
We will, but I don't think it's available yet.
Okay. Would you follow up with an answer? Because I'm interested in a pod exercise for that methodology. Did we reach people that we would not have normally reached, and they just paid the $20 instead of having billing? I'm just interested in the statistic.
So we'll follow up. We'll make sure that you get that information when it becomes done with all the events. And in this month, we've administered a little over 4,000 vaccines total, so just for flu. So it's going to take us a little bit of time to get that, but we'll make sure we follow up and get you that information.
I will say that anecdotally, there I have heard from a number of people who were pleased that they had that $20 option, so to speak.
Just pay the $20 and bill.
Yeah. So I think that there probably were people who took advantage of that, on that.
But being very aware that no one was turned away. If they didn't have the $20, we gave them a vaccine anyway, and that's our philosophy. And that's the same way if they come to the Health Department, if they have the inability to pay, we're still going to be able to administer them a vaccine.
All right. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to accept Jamie's report. All right?
I move to accept the flu vaccination point of dispensing presentation.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will ask for any public comment. Thank you, Jeanne. Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. I will adjourn the Board of Health. Goodbye. Didn't seem to make a motion.
All right. We're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We'll now take up the last item on the morning agenda. This is with respect to the VNT Railroad and the current plan of expenditure. This is item... Where are we on the number on this one?
23A.
23A. You know, City Manager, when I open the hearing on this, I'd like you to give a rundown, kind of an overview of what's going on here. We've got three or four agenda items on this item. So just kind of talk to us about what's going on, and then we'll go to each one. So right now, I'm going to open the hearing on, to conduct a public hearing and take public comment on a proposed amendment to the plan of expenditure for the VNT Railroad sales tax, authorizing the city to expend any sales tax accumulated to date and remaining each fiscal year after sufficient sales tax had been set aside to pay debt service on bonds secured by the tax on certain street and highway preservation and rehabilitation projects. So that's where we are. Public hearing's open. Now you can give us the top-level view of what we're doing here on all these items. Just, we'll take them up seriotom as we get them, but I'd like to let us know what... Just talk about the process and what's going on here.
We also have Ryan Henry here from Sherman &amp; Howard, and we're going to make sure that he gets to talk today.
Just like a lawyer.
Okay. So the current plan that's in place was approved by the Board on September 1st, 2005, to finance a portion of the cost of reconstructing the Virginian Trekkie Railroad. And it authorizes the city to expend the revenue that's derived from the sales tax that we levied on the debt service for the VNT historical bonds. Those were initially issued for $15 million, and in 2014 were refunded. And that is the city's only obligation under the current plan, is to pay the debt service on those bonds. So over the last several years, sales tax revenues have exceeded the annual debt service payments, resulting in accumulation of fund balance in the VNT Special Infrastructure Fund. And at the end of fiscal 2019, that balance is expected to be about $1.3 million. So the proposed plan amendment will allow the city to use $754,000 of that balance for the Roop Street rehabilitation and East Clearview Drive preservation projects. So in addition to having that fund balance accumulated each year, we're receiving approximately an additional $391,000 in revenue over what the debt service is. So the proposed amendment will allow the city to use any sales tax remaining each fiscal year for street and highway preservation and rehabilitation projects in accordance with the city's pavement management plan. We did submit some late material yesterday revising the wording. We were limiting ourselves to a max of $350,000, but then it came up, what if we end up with more than $350,000 after all the debt services paid off? We wanted to be able to use that for the roads. So just to note that the 1/8, the 1% sales tax that was levied pursuant to NRS 377B is restricted to only infrastructure projects. It cannot be used for any other city operating requirements. So the plan is still scheduled to expire upon the final payment of the principal and interest on the bonds. That is in December of 2025. At that time, the Board will need to determine whether a necessity exists for the continued imposition of the tax, or if that, if you do want to continue the tax, a new plan of expenditure would need to be adopted at that time. Or if you decide not to continue the tax, we would need to repeal the ordinance that enacted the tax. And I think that's all I have on the background on that.
Okay. Want to add anything there on the public hearing?
For the record, Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard. I think Nancy's hit all the main points that are important. The only thing I would add is that, as she mentioned, the currently outstanding 2014 E-bonds are secured by this tax. And I've taken a look at the bond ordinance for those bonds and all the other bond documents. And so just what I wanted to put on the record is that nothing in the plan amendment or the sales tax amendment should be construed to impair those VNT bonds or the security for those bonds. As Nancy mentioned, you know, those will get paid first before any of these additional street and highway projects will get paid. And that was just what I wanted to add on the record here.
Okay. So legally, you're telling us that if we do this, we're not going to be in violation of a bond indenture?
Yes, that's exactly what I want to tell the city and put on the record. You know, I'm worried about a very narrow area in my world, which is what the bondholders might say. And so, you know, we've put a lot of effort into this project in making sure that the language crafted here makes sure that they won't be impaired, and we won't affect the security for those bonds, so the city should be in good shape there.
Just a comment? Well, and additionally, we're only going to do a pay, excuse me, a pay-as-you-go with the remainder funds. Therefore, there's no impairment, because the bonds are paid first, and then we only use excess.
That's exactly right.
Right. So it's pay-as-you-go. No bond on the streets. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody want to testify? Not you, Lucia. And not John Barrett either. Public testimony, anybody? All right. We're going to, unless there's anybody else who wants to weigh in here, we're going to close the hearing on this matter, and we'll take up 23 Bravo. This is a companion matter, to adopt an amended plan of expenditure for the VNT Railroad sales tax, authorizing the city to expend any sales tax accumulated to date and remaining each year, then remaining each fiscal year thereafter, after sufficient sales tax had been set aside to pay debt service on bonds secured by the tax on certain street and highway preservation and rehabilitation projects. And as we just heard from Bond Counsel, the amendment to the plan of expenditure will not endanger the bond indentures that we have already existing for the VNT Railroad. The other discussion we want on this issue? John? Anybody? Go.
I have a few items. First, I think that we should discuss the potential, if a recession were to hit, for sales tax revenues to drop, the amount of revenue generated by this below the amount that would be in the fund to pay the debt service. And what I mean by all that is that we should keep a reserve in place above and beyond the amount of the debt service. So I think that we need to discuss what that amount of reserve should be in case of a drop in revenue. Secondly, the original plan of expenditure includes construction of a permanent depot terminal. And if we make this change to the plan of expenditure, in my view, then we are abandoning that component of the original plan of expenditure. So I want us to discuss that. I'm not sure that I have an objection. I'm not sure that I have an objection to that, but I think that we should discuss it and get it on the record. And then, you know, when you look at the VNT, Carson City's going to put 15 million by the time, well, we have put 15 million into the project. Story County, 1.2 million. Lion County, basically zero. And that doesn't include an additional 4 million from the Carson City Visitors Bureau. So I think when you look at the people that have funded this project and the benefit that they've received from it, it doesn't seem like it's well-balanced. So I think that also should be part of our discussion today. And then, my final comment is that when there is a vote by the people on a tax and we implement a tax, and it is for a set period of time, my personal belief is that that tax should then sunset at the end of that period. We're now changing the Plan of Expenditure and adding an additional purpose that this tax can be used for, which is going to generate some motivation on the part of a future board to not sunset this tax and to continue it, because it's going to generate revenue for road repair. And so I would ask, if possible, that we include some statement on the record that it is our intent to sunset that. Obviously, we can't bind a future board, but if they understand what our intent was, I think that that would be helpful.
So as far as keeping a balance in the fund, that's why we will currently, we'll have 1.3 million. We're only going to spend 754,000 of that, so leaving about 550,000 in fund balance. We, we won't be touching that until, like, the bonds are paid off. So there's that cushion there, because we also have the two-month lag time with the sales tax receipt, so we don't want to end up where we're in a, you know, cash shortage situation. And then, we'll also watch each year before we allow them to use that additional 391,000 or 350,000. We'll monitor the sales tax and see how it's coming in, and if it's not available, you know, then we won't, they won't spend it. So, so that's how we're going to keep track of that. The original Plan of Expenditure, when they did that, they had to include all of the different elements of the project, but the only portion that the city was, is responsible for is the $15 million bond and the debt service on the bond. The, the city isn't required to, to finish that other portion of the project, so, because currently in the plan and in the ordinance, we can only use the sales tax to pay for the debt service on those bonds, or bonds to, that are used to refund them. So it doesn't even include any issuing any new bonds if we wanted to, to, you know, pay for other portions of the project, so. Did that answer your question?
I don't know that I had any questions. I just want to make sure that we discuss this on the record so that there is a clear record of our intent in, in a motion or as far as what we were thinking for a future board that's going to have to interpret our actions today in 2026 or 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly endorse what Brad just said. He is the chairman of our RTC, and thank him and Lori for their good work on that unit. I agree wholeheartedly with the idea that this should sunset, and if I am still up and taking sustenance, I will be here in 2025 if anybody tries to make a move. Probably no one will listen to me, but Brad, if you're here too, I, we can, we can make this a pointed matter. We can include it in today's motion. I would urge that you make the motion so that we get it the way you'd like to have it, because that's important to me. I agree with you that this is a tax that was, for one thing, and we're broadening it slightly. It's still transportation, but at the same time, I don't, I don't want that future board to say, ooh, licking its chops, there's more money here, we can just go on. So I, I'm with you on that. And the fact that the bonds run out mean that the tax should run out at the same time, or they should go through the entire process of redoing it as a new initiative, rather than just saying, we'll extend it. As far as the part that you talked about regarding what's still undone, I would agree that we could include in the motion an invitation for Story County and Lion County to pay for that, so that they're aware of the fact that we think we've shouldered most of the burden. Thank you.
Well, a couple of things. I was on the VNT Board, and I'll tell you that Lion County, Washoe County, Lion County, and Douglas County pay zip. And we've tried numerous times to change that, that it's probably not going to happen. Second, you know, on, on the theoretical side of issues like this, at some point in time, you know, roads are, have been funded through the gas tax, and there's a clear nexus between use of roads and the impairment of roads. You know, and there's a nexus on this one as well for infrastructure, but I worry that at some point in time, we have to face the piper that gas tax is not sufficient to cover the needs of our roads. And this is, this, you know, and I, my own, my own sense is, is when we start, you know, these, these funds are not technically general fund dollars, but they were designed for a different purpose. And I think, you know, when we start going down this road of picking up ancillary ways to make do with our road situation that we have, I think we're doing a, you know, we need to not lose sight of the fact that at some point in time in this world, there has to be some form of funding mechanism for roads. Either that, or we just got to say, you know what, it comes out of a general fund, and go on down the road, which I, to me, that there's no real nexus between a lot of the general fund monies that come in on sales tax and roads. And so I intend to vote for this, because I think it's, we're in a position on roads where we need to do this, we need to have, need to have that help. But as a long-term method of financing infrastructure projects like this through this method, it'd be very difficult to get me to go down another road. Okay? All right, go.
So my, my question kind of goes along with what others are saying here, but I'm more interested in why can't we pay the bond off early and eliminate the debt with the excess dollars that are available? And then start clean with a new resolution?
So you could continue to accumulate the revenue in that fund, and it would, we could defees the bonds that would probably end up being about two years earlier than they are currently going to be paid off.
So instead of paying off in '26, you're saying it would be 20? If we paid off early, we would only be able to save two years? So then we need to weigh, and I guess that's our real discussion point to, to go along with what you're saying. Here's what the purpose of the tax was, here's when it should end, so do we get a greater good for the community to utilize the excess dollars now for roads, because we're only going to get a two-year gain on the bond? And I think it's a good discussion that we're having on the record, because I think we owe it to the public to, to try to always do as anticipated. So I think that, what's our balancing act to that?
In a follow-up comment, one of the projects that the initial 700 and some thousand dollars would go towards is a current construction project that is completed except for one portion, which is the money that would, that would come from this fund. So if we don't, we kind of backed ourselves into a corner, because if we don't approve this, now we're not going to complete that construction project. Or we have to come up with another source of funding.
And I think that's the discussion point with the public, is to recognize this is a good problem to have, right? How often is the government actually doing better than what was projected when the bond was issued? So I guess we can look at it, too, as an opportunity to do more for our community than was originally anticipated. And the two years that we could save on bond timing, not dollars, just timing, versus completing that project, and, and how much more benefit is that to the community? Probably pretty big for the completion of that project.
That'd be the, the Fairview Drive rehabilitation, or it's reconstruction, right? We already did the rehabilitation, now it's the reconstruction, right?
Roop and Clearview.
Right, but I'm specifically talking about Roop Street. Because there's the one section from Carson Street over to, to Roop that is being reconstructed. So we've already finished the rehabilitation of, from Roop and Fairview all the way up to Highway 50. So this is the last section, which, because this is where the freeway terminated, came into town, stopped at the traffic light there at Carson Street and Fairview, that road's been pretty well torn up.
Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager, for the record, that, that portion that you're talking about, Supervisor, from, on Fairview from South Carson Street to Roop Street, that will happen regardless of the decision today. The portion discussed in the Plan of Expenditure under consideration today is from Roop Street North, near the judicial complex. And so that, that, that piece of road is in bad condition, and, and that's what the city couldn't necessarily afford without this VNT bond, but it's a, it's a separate segment.
So give the parameters again on Roop Street, just for this one project. Where would it be from, from Fifth or from Fairview?
Excuse me, I didn't want to misspeak. The portion that we're talking about on Roop Street for the VNT Plan of Expenditure is .2 miles from Fifth Street North to Musser Street.
Well, I agree with Lori. I had toyed in my mind, why don't we just pay the bond off early? But for the two years that it saves and for the good that this accomplishes, that is the greater good, I think, for our community. And we know we're strapped in terms of roads and trying to accomplish things that need to happen, and that's a well-trafficked area, so, by this community. So I think it's important that the money go towards that.
John?
Thank you. Maybe a question for Lucia or Darren. To actually quantify this, paying off two years early is a good idea, but how much does six years of not doing projects that we can do with this money cost us in the increase of roads getting worse, and then they have to be fixed later for more in inflated dollars? I presume we're going to have inflation before we have the recession, but I hope I'm not wrong about that.
It's tough to predict the cost of these projects. Depends on contractors, how busy they are, the prices that we can get. Having planned budgets for these projects and implementing our pavement management plan, where we can plan ahead and get our projects out to bid early and have those larger-scale project bid packages, where we can get a contractor and come in and get economies of scale, both in materials, in mobilization, in testing costs, quality assurance, all of those things, the bigger the package that you can get, the better the prices we have opportunity to receive. And so having that, I will add that pavement management best practices is that you want to keep your good roads good. It's cheaper to maintain them when they're in good, good distresses, not as many distresses, than when the quality gets worse and you need to do those more expensive rehabs. So the, the Roop Street and the Clearview projects, those were selected based on their current condition, and that if, if they aren't done now, the cost to bring them back up will be much more expensive on a, on a per square foot or per yard basis.
Thank you, that's kind of the answer I was looking for, but I don't, I didn't know for sure. Secondarily, I want to talk about the elephant, that it's either in the room or not in the room, and that is, this still is what Brad sometimes referred to as band-aiding. This won't, won't solve our problem by any means, so we, the mayor's correct, we need to find a way, because we're not going to get more gas tax, unless we get it ourselves right here, I think. So I think that's another reason, because it just draws out in relationship to what you said, it's going to cost more and more. So we, we need to do what we can, but we also need to get folks to step up and do a bigger pot later.
Well, just so you guys know, I did drive to California and bought a Mega Millions ticket for Carson City to fix the roads, but we didn't win the billion, the 1.5 billion dollars, so sorry. I did give it a try, though.
Maybe we all should have gone over there.
That's my call, our RTC chairman.
All right, do we have further discussion on this issue? I don't, but the public discussion on this, there wasn't during the public hearing. Seems like people understand what we're trying to get accomplished here. All right, we'll entertain a motion then.
I move to adopt an amended Plan of Expenditure for the VNT Railroad Sales Tax, authorizing the city to expend any sales tax accumulated to date and remaining each fiscal year after sufficient sales tax has been set aside to pay debt service on bonds secured by the tax, plus sufficient reserves on certain street and highway preservation and rehabilitation projects.
And including the late material from today?
Referencing the late materials that we received this morning on item 23A for the cost of the street and highway project.
Okay, on the motion, discussion? Yes.
Again, from my points of discussion from earlier, I just want to go on the record saying that I adamantly support the action of a future board to sunset this tax when the bonds are paid off, and to not be tempted by the use of this revenue in continuing this. This was put to a vote of the people for a specific purpose, and when the term of that use is up, I think that the bond should sunset, and we should go through the process again if it's going to be used for the roads.
Anybody not concur with that? Okay, all right. So we have a motion in a second. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, okay. All right, let's take up bottom 23 Charlie. This is a companion measure. We'll open the public hearing to receive public input on the introduction on first reading of an ordinance amending Title 21, specifically Chapter 21.06 of the VNT Railroad Tax of the Carson City Municipal Code to revise various provisions relating to the purpose, imposition, refund, and use of the VNT Railroad Sales Tax. Ms. Paulson, you want to just give a top line on this one, about what's going on? It's a compare, we've talked a lot about it.
Okay, yes. So back in 2005, we were a little too specific when we did the original ordinance, and so in addition to amending the Plan of Expenditure, we also have to amend the ordinance, because currently the municipal code says that the sales tax revenue may only be used for the payment of principal and interest on the VNT historical bonds. So we need to amend that to also allow the city to use the proceeds of the sales tax for the streets and highway infrastructure projects described in the amended Plan of Expenditure.
Public comment, anybody? Okay, we're going to close the hearing if there's no public, close a public part of the public hearing. All right, here, seeing no public comment, we're going to close the public hearing on, on this matter, and we'll take up the actual motion on 23 Delta. This is a companion measure to amending the code to allow the imposition, allow the use of funds from the VNT Railroad bond for the street infrastructure projects identified in the Plan of Expenditure. All right, further discussion on this issue? Yes, sir, Ryan, go.
Mayor, for the record, Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard. Once again, I'd just like to reiterate that these code amendments do not impair the outstanding 2014 E-VNT refunding bonds. And just one other point to add, there's an additional requirement under the statute that we have to meet, which says, you know, whenever you amend the original sales tax ordinance, you have to take a look at whether or not the collection agreement the city entered into with taxation back in 2006 needs to be amended or not. We've already reached out to the Department of Taxation, and we've began discussions with them about whether or not that original collection agreement needs to be amended. We believe it does not need to be amended, and in that situation, we just need a written concurrence of the Department of Taxation, and Dan and I are working on that, and we hope to, you know, have that in place before second reading of the sales tax ordinance. So I just wanted to mention that. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. All right. Other public comment? Board, we ready to do this? Motion's in order.
I just would like to make one more point and that is that on all of this, I think we all feel that our public works and our transportation director have done a good job and we don't, at least speaking for myself, I don't want to get involved in saying this project should go before that project, et cetera, because I think we've all had constituents come to us and say, oh, we, you know, we need this work, we need that work. And we don't get down into the weeds quite that much because we leave that to professionals who know what they're doing. So we'll probably hear from people, oh, now you have more money. We'd like some of it. And those are the folks that tell where we're going to fix things. Thank you, Brad and Lori, again, on RTC for getting that kind of plan forward for us.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you want to make a motion, John?
No.
I'll make it. I moved, I moved to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 119, an ordinance amending Title 21, Chapter 21.06 of the Carson City Municipal Code to revise various provisions relating to the purpose, imposition, refund and use of the VNT railroad sales tax referencing the items we received as late material today on the cost of the street and highway project addendum.
Second.
And included in the motion, let's, I don't think we need to add this to the motion, but we'll incorporate the comments and, and discussion from the three prior agenda items in this matter so that we all know where we are. Okay? All right. There's a motion. Did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ryan. All right. All right. We'll now move to item number 24, non-action items. Anybody?
Just want to say that what we just did is great. Doesn't solve the problem, but it helps.
Okay. A couple of things. One, I think it was a safe Halloween last night. Didn't hear anybody getting, getting in any trouble. I will say, you know, since we live up in that area around the Governor's Mansion, we were swamped with people and that's a good thing. And you know what, it was, you know, my wife and I were most impressed with was everybody was dressed up and having a good time. I mean, you know, seemed this year that it was just people having a good, a good time, parents and kids, kids alike. There, there's a couple of things going on tomorrow that the board probably knows about, but should at, at 2:00 or 3:00, we're going to have a celebration or ribbon cutting with respect to the new lumber facility at the industrial airpark. And at 5:30, I think we're doing the Fandango for their new conference room. And then I think it's next Friday, not this coming Friday, but next Friday, they'll be having a ceremony at the Veterans Memorial behind the Capitol with respect to the new battleborn memorial for Nevadans who died in wars. That'll be next Saturday, next Friday, not this one, but next Friday. Celebrations, the receptions at 9:00, the actual celebration's at 10:00. Actual unveiling is at 10:00. Okay, anything else?
A comment. I'm, I'm not getting any of the notifications of ribbon cuttings. So I'm not sure what's going on.
There's some time, I don't know.
We got that one in the mail.
Yeah.
Fandango and actual invitation, not a...
I did not get it.
And you didn't get the other letter either.
No, I didn't.
Sometimes these come to, come through the Chamber of Commerce and they just get picked up, I think. So we'll do our best to, if we're going to cut a ribbon, tell everybody what is, I think, okay? All right, we can, we'll, we'll work through that.
Yeah, and you didn't get the other letter either.
You think you're a mushroom?
She likes to come with us.
I believe tomorrow night also there's a art matter at the hub.
At 5:30, there's a...
Yeah. About the same time as the Fandango.
It's at the museum. For the Day of the Dead or whatever.
That's right. It's a museum.
For all our painted... Well, did a super job on the painting of their masks at the hub. Just want to say they did a really nice thing for the community where they had everyone paint those. I was not one of the great painters, but I certainly enjoyed myself. The kids did a fantastic job. When you really looked at all of the masks that were hung up, it was like, wow. Those kids really understood the project and just artists, artists everywhere in our community.
Well, and the Day of the Dead celebration is Saturday from 10:00 until 3:00. Nevada State Museum.
And speaking of museums, if you haven't been, if you haven't been up to see the old Assembly Chambers?
Oh, yeah.
On the battleborn exhibit up there? I mean, it, it looks like a Capitol now. That's really nice upstairs. They've done a nice job with that. All right, anything else? Any? Yes, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to add to what you said about last night, my Carson, my office looks right out onto Carson Street and the activity in the downtown was just crazy. There were a ton of people, the kids were going around, they must have been trick or treating and so that was really good to see, you know, all the life in the downtown.
There was Boonan.
Yeah.
We have Boonan, so it's good at the community center.
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I want to thank our city manager because as our former finance chairman, I think she's the one who helped uncover this matter that we just did on roads from the VNT. And she brought that to us and, and it's really worked out well. So thanks to her for that.
Yeah, and it even got by the dragon lady.
The dragon lady had her own pumpkin display. Did you see that?
I did. I thought it was, I voted for it. All right. All right. Anything else before we take a recess until 1:30 when we take up the public works issue on the waste manage, waste disposal? Anybody? Good meeting this morning, folks. There's a lot of timber that was moved this morning. All right, we'll be in recess until 1:30.